Okay, it's nine o'clock. A meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the Central Judiciary Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl, Granbury, Texas. Would you please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this marvelous day. I just pray that you give this court and all leaders, all the way down from the small leaders up to the world leaders, wisdom and knowledge to do your will. Just guide us and protect us, and thank you that your son died on the cross for us. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in the Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We have special presentations, Bob?
There won't be any today, sir.
Okay. We have a proclamation to read. Jeff, would you read the proclamation?
This is the Commissioner's Court Proclamation Regarding Constitution Week 2013, whereas on September 17th, 2013, marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary and anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, Darryl Cockerham and Commissioner's Court of Hood County, Texas, along with the members, the other members of Hood County Commissioner's Court, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2013, to be Constitution Week in Hood County, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787, signed on this 10th day of September, 2013.
Okay, we entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
The door is here if you want to present.
Yeah, I want to get them up. I want to get you guys up. Betty and Elizabeth, well, no, Elizabeth Crockett's not here, is she? And John Taylor. Pardon? Okay, well, I want to get you all to come up.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second. All right, have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, now, if you all come up and...
We sign it and give it to them.
Yeah, and get y'all good picture. Y'all have to come up just...
Hold on, Crockett.
Just a minute, as soon as they sign it, well, you can get it from Commissioner Dever.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Okay, does any citizen, I have one request to speak this morning. Does anybody else have any item that they'd wish to address that's on the agenda? If so, raise your hand and sheriff will pass out a form for you. Anyone else wish to talk about any agenda item? Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll get to that at the proper time. All right, does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Just an item G, Judge, that I don't see that the constable's here, but that contract has been renegotiated with the proper step raise, and that's why that came back to court this early. Number one, it's a renewal, but Chad's not here.
Matt's here, though.
No, but Chad's not. But the fact is, that's why they've gone back and he renegotiated for a higher rate so that Matt will be included in those SO raises when we talk about those after, later in the agenda.
Okay.
For discussion.
Okay, then if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried. Subdivision, roads and plats, discuss roadway of County Roads 307.
Judge Cockham, Commissioner Roan had asked that I place this on the agenda so that the court can publicly discuss this roadway and its status. We've, what we've seen during the plating process when this began back in April was that we had an open road that was, that was being maintained by Somerville County, and then since that time, other events have come up, and that Commissioner Roan had asked that we place this on there, that we discuss it.
I really didn't know about discussing it. The reason I asked it to be placed on the agenda was so that the court could, as previous courts have, simply by attrition, recognize it as a public road. Unless the road has been either condemned or whatever, in the absence of any other action, it is considered a public road. And a public road simply means that it's accessible for male, emergency vehicle, school buses, things like that. I just wanted that to be a matter of public record.
Okay, Mr. Kane, do you want to come up and address the Commissioner's Court?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about this. Commissioner Roan, you'd mentioned a couple of topics on how a road can become public, and I guess I'll start there. I've handed each one of you a presentation. I know I get lots of information as an attorney or city council all the time, and so I tried to keep my comments very, very brief and as an overview. The last thing you need to do is have a treatise on things to read. But a couple of points that you raised, Commissioner Roan, and we'll start there. Typically, a road can become a public road through public dedication, a public purchase, condemnation, or continuous use and maintenance, and there's a couple of things that come with that. Our position is very clear. I represent Byron Stinson. He's the property owner whom the road goes through heading back to the Orchard on the Brazos subdivision. That property has a longstanding history of that road being a private road. We have done, taken a couple of steps to try to preserve the nature of that. In my review of public records, I can find no public dedication where a private property owner has dedicated to public use in either Somerville County or Hood County. There's been no acquisition by a public entity of that and no condemnation documents. Commissioner Roan, you'd mentioned a longstanding public use, and I've litigated this type of issue on both sides of the issue over the last 13 years throughout North Texas. And one of the issues that you look at on a public roadway that has just been used as a public road over a long period of time is if there is a public nature or public use. This particular roadway has a couple of cattle crossings. There's no access to anything other than the property owner at the back end, and it terminates with a gate.
We have multiple roads in Hood County with cattle crossings that access personal and private and public properties.
That's correct, but when you get into the issue of litigating whether or not it's public or private, that is one of many factors that Texas courts have recognized to consider that. I agree with you that that does not in and of itself determine whether it's public or private, but the case law in Texas is very clear that when it terminates and there is no public use, it is for a private citizen individually. That does not make it a public use. The gate at the very end of it, at the Orchard on the Brazes property, has continuously for 17 years been locked. In other words, you don't have a public road that goes to nowhere. You have a private access that is an issue on that. If you have a situation where a roadway has been allowed as a public use, like this situation over a long period of time, it has to be what we call adverse. It has to be against the property owner's usage. Now, in this particular case, what is very important is you have a change of use in the property. For the last 17 years and arguably for the last 40 or 50 years, that property has been one unit, and you've had one property owner going back through there. We have filed a lawsuit in the district court over this to ask Judge Walton to look at and make a declaration of the nature of this road. Our first position is that it is a license, that is an individual license, to be able to use Mr. Stinson's roadway to get back there. As a backup or an alternative, it is that it is an easement. Why that's important is because if it is an easement, Texas law says that you can't increase the burden on that easement without dealing with the servient or the property owner that the road goes across.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did I understand you to say you have filed the lawsuit?
We have.
Then we are finished here.
Well, and...
It's not a court of law.
I understand that, and we have not filed suit against Hood or Somerville County at this point.
Can't make any comments if there is a pending lawsuit already filed.
With all due respect, Commissioner Roan, the purpose of this is to educate the Commissioner's Court on our position. I wanted to advise you...
Do that with this.
And we have done that, but I also want to advise you of our position as the property owner on that.
This is a civil matter now, so my understanding of your position doesn't matter.
Well, I would say that you're correct. Now, let me jump to my conclusion and then back up to that. Anytime somebody comes to me with a problem and identify a problem, those are a dime a dozen. Then the question becomes, how do you propose on resolving that? We have offered to talk to the property owner, and we think that you've got an issue, not just the county, but all of us have an issue out there. You've got a subdivision that's been approved, and you've got a nine-and-a-half-foot wide roadway that has some dangerous attributes where it is. There are some alternative areas, and we've been in discussions with Somerville County officials to look at not only the history of this, but also how do we fix the problem? How do we be able to provide the access that the other property owner wants? And we believe, and we have not served the lawsuit yet, we're just getting started on that. We would like to sit down and have representatives of both counties and both property owners sit down at a table, and let's look at the problem and look for solutions to that. We're willing to do that.
I think I would for, speak for myself, at least for my precinct, would also be willing to do that and would prefer that that's the way you solve problems amongst thinking adults. However, until and unless our county attorney tells me that I am free to join that group and sit down and discuss with a lawsuit pending, I'll do nothing.
And I understand.
I could, literally, I could attempt to do the right thing and end up in jail.
Well, and I completely understand that, and I would strongly encourage you to go through the county attorney and follow the county attorney's lead, as Somerville County has done, as I do when I rely on the city attorney. That's good advice to do that. But we would propose that a meeting like that take place, and let's work the problem before we go down the litigation route. My concern was that if you pass a resolution declaring it a public road without the proper documentation, then we have another issue on that. But in the packet, just to kind of give you an idea of what's going on, I have a summary. I put a copy of the lawsuit so you know what our position is. I don't like surprises. I want to kind of get you fully informed on where we are, and Tab 3 has some photographs of the roadway and what's going on. We have learned through our discussions with officials through Somerville County that about 25 years ago, they went through a program of paving a lot of roads and had mistakenly paved a lot of private roads, and we think this is one of those types of situations.
I have a question then.
Yes, sir.
If you mistakenly pave a private road, why wouldn't the landowner, if he has objection to the new development, why wouldn't he stop him from paving his private road?
Well, I can't answer on every particular situation. Mr. Stinson can't answer that particular question because this happened prior to his ownership 17 years ago. But what I'm telling you is that...
The road's not been paved 17 years.
It's been paved over 25 years ago.
But it's, what he's saying is it's been maintained since then.
It has not.
That culvert looks brand new there.
That's the private property owner has taken care of those things.
Those culvert was put in by you, Mr. Stinson?
There is no... Yes, the brand-new culvert up there with the concrete, I put that in. I maintain that, put that in.
But it's got county road signs up there. That's not objectionable?
Well, the county road sign goes to the county line, and they have since, and you can see, I think I may have a copy of that photograph in the packet. If not, I have, I have one as part of the lawsuit. Yeah, you've got a sign that was recently put up where the county line is so that Somerville County, it's my understanding, they erected the sign because they wanted to know exactly where that was, because the road straddles both of those. But again, the problem, another problem that you have, you've got 57 lots in that subdivision. As I understand the Hood County requirements, to put a subdivision of that size in, you've got to have enough roadway to be able to service that. If you look at the photographs, you've got a one-lane traffic that's going to cause some safety issues, and when you look at the topography of where that road is, to be able to make the improvements on that road and expand it, you're going to incur a tremendous amount of expense because you've got a virtual cliff and a gully going down towards the Brazes on one side, not to mention the fact that if you're going to rely on longstanding use and you expand the road base, you've got to go through eminent domain or dedication or some other vehicle to be able to acquire that right to expand that road. So I go back to kind of my conclusion again. These are the various problems that we have out there. We're more interested at this point to sit down and look for resolutions, and as a certified mediator, that's one of the things that I do a lot, is to try to get everybody to come to consensus where maybe not everybody likes the result, but it's something everybody can live with. If we go the litigation route, both parties and potentially counties, if that gets to that point, are going to spend a tremendous amount of money. Before that happens, I would prefer that we sit down and see if there's a resolution to do that. So I would respectfully request the Commissioner's Court to not take any action at this point in time. To be real blunt, Commissioner Roan, if the Commissioner's Court were to issue a declaration declaring it a public road, then we're going to have to add y'all to the lawsuit.
We have no intent of doing that. We have no intent of taking any action. I simply wanted public record that the court has, this court and the previous court, by various notes, et cetera, has recognized the area as a public road. So that's all I want to do. We're not taking any action. I recognize it's now a civil matter. I, for one, would prefer to sit back and have that civil judge or civil court direct us on what we do next.
I think that's a good idea, Commissioner, and likewise, we'll be in touch. We'll go through the county attorney, obviously, with both counties and see if there's a consensus. I have, there's a Dallas attorney, his name slips my mind, that represents Orchard on the Brazes. To be quite frankly, I have not been able to get good communication lines with him so far. Filing a lawsuit sometimes will do that. That's my hope. But if they think that they're going to come and run over Mr. Stinson's property and put 57 new homes out there and increase the burden on it, and he's not going to stand up for his property rights as a Texan, they're sadly mistaken. But the best course of action today is to sit down, and we've tried to talk to him about doing that, and he said, no, we're going to just come through. I said, well, hang on. There's a process to go through. But if that falls through, then we'll have no other choice. But my hope is that reasonable minds, as you said, can come together and come up with a solution. Be happy to answer any questions.
If that doesn't work, then a district judge can make it work.
That's correct, and we have a procedural mechanism to do that, and that's the more appropriate thing, and I agree with you, and we'll certainly abide by whatever Judge Walton and the appellate courts decide.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I've got a couple of questions. Is the Orchard on the Brazes landlocked?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
I don't know if it is or isn't. That's a whole different issue, and I'll tell you that what Texas law says, when you do have a landlock issue, you, and it's a little more complicated, you have to come through a common source and all that, but at the end of the day, you have to allow access to the property. But he's got access, whether it's a license or an easement. The issue becomes when you subdivide and you increase the burden on that easement, you have to either deal with the property owner that you're increasing the burden. Texas law doesn't allow you to do that. So the game changer for us is the subdivision of the property. You've got construction trucks going through constantly that will damage the road. Then you have, you can just imagine, 57 homes, the amount of traffic on a nine-and-a-half-foot one-way is going to create a definite increase on the burden on that potential easement or license.
So is that a nine-and-a-half-foot road all the way from 67 to the gate?
Okay, from the actual Hood County line, my property basically, to there, it varies between nine-and-a-half up to 12 foot, and there's some areas where the cliff is eroded in and actually, I mean, it's just a straight-on fall. Just more information for you, my own family, I had one of my grandkids actually drive off that cliff, and she hadn't keep on her tree, she would have probably been killed with two of her friends because of 60-foot cliff. If that many people are coming in and out of that road, people are going to die. It's not safe. It's just not safe for coming in and out. That's why I'm here to say this roadway is...
Commissioner Todd, if you look at Tab 3, the very last page, there's a couple of photographs. The top one shows the ingress and egress entrances to the new development back on their property, and then it comes through that single gate. That single gate is the roadway at issue. That's the gate that Commissioner Roan I was talking about has been locked.
Right.
And that's the real critical point under Texas law, not so much the cattle guards, and I think you were correct, but that cattle guards is not in and of itself an indication of public versus private, but the locked gate helps in that position. The photograph below gives you an idea, there's a vehicle, and this is looking back, I believe, from the Orchard on the Brazes looking south, and you can see a truck on that roadway. That's one portion of the roadway. If you look one page before that, you can see a sign, private road, no trespassing, and there's some of those signs throughout the area, but you can see the width where you've got the ATV vehicle sitting there, and Mr. Stinson down in the gully part, just off to the side of that. So it gives you kind of a feel of what the roadway looks like through there.
I have two questions as well. This was posted in the legal notices of the paper, and when this went back to the Development Commission back before we ever approved it, why wouldn't there a question raised at that point?
Well, and I'll tell you, when you've got, Mr. Stinson lives in Glenrose in Somerville County, and you're right, and we run across those issues...
He lives in Hood County.
But you run, you run across those issues of whether the posting is effective or not. Two things on that. First of all, until the development started, he didn't have any actual notice, and I understand constructive notice and how that works, but he didn't have any actual notice until the truck started showing up. And at one point in time, he consulted with legal counsel with us, and without going into, you know, what we advised him and didn't because of attorney-client privilege, we started a course of trying to work with the developer early on in the process.
Okay, my next question, and if this is a private road issue, then why did he put the road at the Orchard's fish line instead of putting it back up to where he thinks his private property starts?
Could you restate the question?
If this is a private road issue and he wants to keep traffic out, why did he put the road at the Orchard's easement area where the property line is for the beginning of the Orchard's instead of, why didn't he block the gate on his own property?
The gates, the gate and the roadway at issue has been in existence for more than 17 years when Mr. Stinson took control of the property. You had a property owner back in the back that had access to that. You can do that on a private road. That's through an easement. It didn't become an issue, and Mr. Stinson doesn't have a problem with him gaining access to his property using that roadway. The problem is when you convert the use from one property owner on one large tract to subdividing with 57 homes, and you're going to have hundreds of vehicles at some point if the development builds out, going back and forth, you've got safety issues, you have dust mitigation issues, and you have an increased burden. You can imagine vehicles on a one-way road like that to pass each other are going to get off on his land and off of the road bed, so you have lots of issues. You're going to tear up his road going back and forth through there. So I don't know if that answers your question. He didn't choose the location of the roadway. He inherited that, and it didn't become an issue till the other property owner decided to subdivide the property. Very good questions, Commissioner Berry. Commissioner Todd?
What was, what would be the status of the previous property owner, or the property owner before it was subdivided? I mean, was he a licensee?
Our position, yeah, our position initially is that he would be a licensee, that he was given permission to use that on an individual basis. The district court's either going to determine that it's a license, and we have since revoked that license. We filed with the Hood County Public Records a revocation of a purported easement to protect and preserve his position. Another alternative is that it would be an easement. It would not be an adverse possession easement because one of the elements of adverse possession is it has to be without right. They've had the right to do that, so, and it has to be exclusive from Mr. Stinson's use. They don't meet that requirement. But what it could be is what's called a prescriptive easement, where over a long period of time, you use it and you've allowed its use, then it can ripen into a prescriptive easement. And if that's the case, we're all right with that if Judge Walton makes that determination. But with a prescriptive easement, you cannot increase the burden on that, which absolutely happens when you have 50-some-odd subdivided plots that's going to increase the use of that roadway, and that's the real issue in this case. Be happy to answer any other questions. Thank you for the opportunity to come up, Judge, and Commissioners, and kind of address our position in a public forum. Commissioner Roan, we like to get this out publicly and let those issues come out, whether ultimately goes to a district court or in a political scenario like this. But again, we're more than willing to sit down and look for resolutions on it. I will tell you, there's another county road, and we've talked to Somerville County officials, and there's another roadway that will get access where you don't have some of the safety issues, and we've talked to them about that possibility and that prospects. My understanding is the developer doesn't like that because their entrance is at one point, but they have an area along the south side where there's a, it looks like there's an easement already, that it could be extended all the way up to their part, and so I think there's some opportunities to get this thing resolved in a way that makes sense, certainly before a bunch of parties spend, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars on litigation costs. So we're willing to do that.
Could I just, Commissioner Berry, one thing you asked about why I didn't come forward during the process with the notice, what you've got to realize is from here to my house is about 40 miles, and so I don't, and from Cleveland to Cleveland, it's 17 miles. So when we need to go to Walmart, we're going, when we need anything, we're going there. So I get a Johnson County paper and I get a Somerville County paper, but since it's 45 miles around to here, I don't get a Hood County paper, and I just simply never knew that was going on. I did know my neighbor Steve Lowe that was selling the property. He talked to me that he wanted to sell it. I told him I couldn't afford the $2 million. I'd love to have it. It's a beautiful piece of property. And I've loaned him my back hose, and I've fixed his fences, and I've got the cattle off there and helped him get his cat. I've been, tried to be a good neighbor. He never once told me, not once, that he was thinking about having it subdivided into 57 units, and nobody said a word to me, and I did not know about it until the day I came home and they had a dozer sitting in the middle of my nine-and-a-half-foot road, fixing to start tearing, making a 65-foot wide exit onto my nine-and-a-half-foot road. I went immediately and told Oscar...
Mr. Roan.
Yeah. I went and told him immediately that day. I said, there's a problem, this is my private road. I have my private signs. I fixed my culvert, the concrete that you're talking about, that where I put the concrete on this side and then the concrete on the other side, because it was washing out my lower road. I paid Larry Holesley Construction for all of that. When a tree falls on that road, I have to get out and cut it up and take it off because Somerville County knows that the line stops at. I don't know why, there was bad information on that, but I've... I don't know why, there was bad information on that, but I've been maintaining that road exclusively for seventeen years. I've spent many, many dollars on it. But I don't have the money to tear from a nine-and-a-half-foot road to an appropriate road, put a guard rail so people won't be killed. I don't have the resources to be able to protect the public coming in and out of there. I don't have it. So I'm appealing to everyone, let's sit down, let's look at this, and let's try to come up with a good solution.
One last thought, Commissioner Roan, tab four is a section, I think it's 248 or 258 of the, can't remember if this is out of the property codes, but as you may recall, from 2005 to 2009, there was a process where counties and governmental entities could go in and through longstanding public use of roads that maybe weren't maintained, but their history was a public road. You could declare that, put it on a map, and make that public. My understanding is Hood County has not done that. This road is not listed in those maps to do that. And then Commissioner Berry, on the public notice, last Friday, I think you had taken up a final approval. I didn't know about that until late in the day, or I certainly would have brought this to the Commissioners Court's attention center.
We approved it well over a month ago.
Okay. I didn't know about it then.
Bottom line is, that road has been paved in the last five years.
Has been repaved in the last five years?
Re-chip seal.
Yeah, chip seal, it has. Not more than eight years.
Well, we'll certainly be pulling up records to see who paved what and what portions on it to be sure as we go through all that. But again, you know, you've got a narrow roadway if you look at the entrance, and you've got some safety issues as well. And quite, to be quite blunt, to be able to expand that to the width you'd have to to meet Hood County requirements and also on developments to be able to handle that kind of traffic count, you're going to have to come in and either through eminent domain or some other process acquire additional land to be able to do it. You can't expand beyond the roadbed as it sits right now unless you've got an easement in place. But again, you know, we're willing to sit down and see if we can come up with some resolutions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge, for the opportunity to talk to you this morning.
Thank you. All right, the next item is budget and finance. Consider budget line item amendments. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There are a few budget line amendments that the officers have requested. Constable Precinct One has asked to move $460 into supplies out of telecommunications and education and travel. You know, of course, that the state legislature increased the compensation for judges, and that is effective September 1st. So the Treasurer and I have worked this out, that we need to move $1,250 out of the longevity pay over into the elected official salary line for 010432. That's the county court at law judge. In facility maintenance, I've talked with Tim. It looks like there's a projected shortfall for his fuel budget of $1,000 for this year. He's asking to move $1,000 into fuel out of supplies. We may have to revisit this issue on the LEC Medical Fund, again, next court. For this court, I believe we can show that the court has realized $7,600 of additional revenues that should be available. The sheriff has said that we're going to need probably $14,000 to cover the medical costs in the jail for the rest of this year. We've identified where we can come up with the $7,600, and I'm not sure about the balance. I've talked with the county attorney, and they're also running short in their fuel budget. It looks like there's going to be $304 needs to go into fuel out of contract services. If any of them are here, I'm sure they would like to address any questions that you'd have. But these are the amendments that we would ask for your consideration and approval this morning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Dever, to approve the budget line item amendments. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the total of these bills for your consideration this morning come to $1,610,000, $124.88. There is a...
Payment schedule to audiovisual elevation?
That's the courtroom video monitor system in the district courtroom. You may recall that work was done and not done very well, and so we were told not to pay it until it was corrected. It has been corrected now, and we've been told that we could release that payment. To Benny Keith Company for jail groceries, $18,467.43. To the City of Granbury for utilities, $48,957.20. Transfer to the Indigent Defense Fund, which is just an accounting fund from the general fund, $35,499.24. To Heartland Asphalt Materials, $92,802.92 for road ops materials. To the Hood County Appraisal District, $127,950.80 for the first quarter of next year appraisal services. To McGee Architects LP, this is architect services for both the Emergency Operations Center and the Animal Control Facility, $164,386.29. A payment of $497,325 to Modern Contractors, Inc., representing a progress payment on the Emergency Operations Center construction. To the Texas Association of Counties, $37,093 for workers' comp insurance. To U.S. National Bank Association, $48,586.72. This is the Voyager Fleet fuel card purchases. So we're quickly approaching $50,000 a month on the fuel card purchases. To Vermeer Equipment of Texas, the purchase of a grinder chipper, $318,545. Then there's one payment that is scheduled that I think deserves your particular attention, and that is something I alerted you two earlier. That's a payment that we were asked to make of $100,000. It is scheduled here to be paid to Haynes and Boone, the attorneys. However, this is for the Lake Granbury Coalition, the legal retainer for the legal firm of Haynes and Boones to represent our community on the BRA permit request. And what I wanted to make sure of is that you do want to pay the full $100,000, or if you want to pay it in parts, whole payment?
Parts.
And who the proper payee is? Should we be paying Haynes and Boones? Should we be paying...
Haynes and Boone when they bill us.
Okay.
Have they not asked for a retainer?
They have.
It's been handled. City took care of it.
We're going to do one-third, and, but that's, yeah, that's, I think that's the way to handle it.
Suppose they stand, they're going to itemize their bills out individually, and that's, that will be the way we'll see it. But can you encumber that $100,000 in this year's budget?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
All right, continue.
Well, that was, that was the list, Your Honor. I just wanted to be sure on that $100,000, if we were to...
No.
Just wait, and so...
We'll wait. Do we get a bill? When we pay it, when we get a bill?
We will issue those purchase orders and encumber this budget so that it won't impact next year's budget.
Okay.
Motion, we ratify paying the bills.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan, to ratify paying the bills. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider take appropriate action to conduct a separate vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in budget per Local Government Code Section 111 dot 008.
Judge and Commissioners, this is a separate legal requirement under Local Government Code Section 111. Because your considered tax rate this year exceeds the effective rate in this case because the rollback rate is higher than the effective rate, there is an additional vote of record that's required by Local Government Code Section 111. And that simply is that you acknowledge that the budget that you're going to consider is going to increase the tax revenue and the tax rate. And this is in addition to the votes, the two votes that are required to adopt the budget and set the tax rate under Tax Code Chapter 26.
Yeah, we'll do that one next.
Okay, so I recommend that you take a record vote on that item three.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner Todd, do I have a second?
Go on, second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and vote on whether to adopt the proposed budget that the subject of two hearings on Tuesday, August 13, 2013, and Tuesday, August 27, 2013, for the 2013-14 budget for Hood County fiscal year included changes as agreed and take appropriate action as per Local Government Code 111 dot 008 and 111 dot 009 of the Tax Code Chapter 26. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $1,527,894, or 10.7% of that amount. $275,000 is tax revenue to be raised by new property tax added on the tax roll for this year.
Judge, I'd like to go into executive session for a vote on this.
All right. We're going to adjourn into executive session for a few minutes, and we'll be right back. Okay, we're back, call back into regular session from executive session. And is there, go ahead, Stanley. We've already read that motion.
Yes, Your Judge. I just wanted to briefly review the process. The motion would be to adopt the budget, and this budget is the one that was presented July 30th and has been on the county's internet website for the past month. It is supported by the tax rate of 38.3908 cents. During the past few weeks since that budget was presented, the court has met several times, and you've identified approximately $132,000 of spending reductions, and those have been posted to the budget, except $122,000 was taken out of the spending from prior fund balance, and $10,000 was added back to general contingency. The general contingency line in non-departmental 010409 was $125,000. That is now shown as $135,000. All the spending that is from fund balance is according to county policy, and that is for building the Emergency Operations Center, for buying equipment, for infrastructure improvement, for reducing debt and the like. So I commend you on your work and deliberation on getting this budget done. I believe it's in the best interest of the county. And the motion has been read, so I would ask for your consideration and your vote.
I'll entertain a motion to...
Before you do that, I would make clarification that item number two that's on the agenda under miscellaneous, if this matrix is approved by the court, but the budget and the funding is already built into the budget, is that not correct, Stan and Judge?
Yes.
So money is there, and we pass this budget, passing the item two is just a preliminary issue, basically, so that we have a step in grading.
I believe that's correct.
That's already funded, in other words, is what you're asking, yes.
I've worked with the personnel office, and we've, we've tried to go through every employee and make sure as best we could that all the calculations are correct.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Todd. All in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Judge, the next thing on the agenda is to set the tax rate that is required to fund that budget that you've just approved. And you have the proposed Hood County tax rate order, and this is an order fixing and levying Hood County ad valorem taxes for the year 2013. The taxes are on a calendar year. They are levied against the properties in October of 2013, and that's why we call it taxes for 2013, even though it's for our 2014 budget year.
Okay, the new tax rate will be .383908 per $100 evaluation for the tax year 2013. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second? All right, is there any further discussion? Then all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a note here, Stan, HR, Treasurer, have really worked hard on this. Stan, I've seen the lights on at his office many times at night, weekends, Sundays, Saturdays. Stan, you've done an excellent job on there.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it. Sometimes people look at me and they think the lights are not on, so...
Stan, Stan, and a lot of people have really worked hard on this.
He has, and I know many times it went back and forth, back and forth with changes and everything, and I said Stan's about to pull his hair out, and Commissioner Berry said he'd buy him a wig if that happened, so...
That's my first budget, look what happened to my hair.
I'd like to take over two next, so we could have order.
Okay, consider and take appropriate action regarding the approval of the law enforcement salary matrix. Item, this is item number two. We're skipping it. Commissioner Berry wanted to take this out of order.
It's a step plan, and if it's approved, it'll go into effect in October. So everyone that's here will understand that the, everyone that's on the law enforcement step plan will be to raise in October. They'll be followed up by their regular step plan, wherever that may land throughout the year. But on October 1st, if I understand right from HR, they'll go to the correct spot on the new step plan, which is 15 steps instead of 12. And also, it has the built-in raise for starting at deputies and working the way from the bottom up to make them more in line with surrounding areas. Is that not correct?
Correct.
Sheriff, do you have anything you want to say about that?
Judge, Commissioners, I know it's been a tough budget year, but for everybody, Stan, Kathy, HR, everybody, so this is a heck of a step. So, thank you.
Well, it's not exactly what you wanted overall, but it's a step in the right direction. And I think you agree, and I think you had four or five people come to one of our budget hearings and ask, and, you know, one of the pennies is set for raises across the board and not, I mean, it's a step planned. I mean, we've been at times we didn't fund raises at all. We may be there again next year, depends on ad valorem values. But, you know, when we can raise a starting deputy $5,000 to try to get them more in line, it's a step in the right direction.
Yep, this is a big step in the right direction, so I appreciate your willingness to work with me and work it out, and this is a big step, and thank you very, very much.
Well, I, for one, am sorry it's taken me this long to get enough, you know, it's not easy to do this, and it's, it's a long time coming, Sheriff. And I appreciate your support and your patience waiting on the court when we're all so shackled with hard decisions of raising taxes. Raising taxes is never popular, but it's the right thing to do, so I appreciate it.
It is, and, you know, I'll talk at any public meetings that you guys have, that you meet with resistance on this, to explain my side of it, our side of it, we're all together on this, and so greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion, we accept the 15-step law enforcement salary plan.
Okay, have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Judge, we need to, we need to put in the record that there'll be a grandfather on this.
As talked about during the last time we got together on budget, there's, there's three areas that we grandfathered that needs to be in the record. The sheriff's aware of it, Constable Jordan's aware of it, as well as Fire Marshal's office. And between now and October 1st, you'll see another area coming out on the law enforcement step plan that will include Constable deputies, Fire Marshal deputies, and I believe Justice Center. But everyone that's been here should not be punished or lowered because of the fact that we're trying to, you know, what I hear when the sheriff come to the budget meetings is, he's losing deputies to other departments. Well, how can you make an equal lateral move for other departments in the county? I want people to want to go to work for the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's worked on it, I mean, he's, it's not an easy decision, and we had about six or eight spots there, we had to find that spot, so there, those positions are grandfathered, and I think when we start in October, they lose it, it'll have to come into the new step plan, and the new rate, new spot on the step plan, which will be for a different deputy line item as well.
Okay.
Okay, so for this, the step plan will say, on this step plan here for deputies will be sheriff's patrol deputies.
Patrol deputies.
Okay.
Okay.
You understood it, Sheriff?
Yes, correct.
All right, do I have any further discussion on this? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Now, number one item, consider and take appropriate action regarding policy updates, the new hire transfer policy. Mary?
Judge and Commissioners, let me get the right one. We made a couple of modifications to this policy on the scheduling. If you look on the package that you have, it's highlighted in red, and what we did was just change the regulation that everybody start on the Monday of a pay period, because it's really actually easier for me to do orientations as people come in. The start-to-work date is the first working day following a holiday, should that pay period begin on a holiday. And that's really the only thing that changed on page one. On page two, on the rehiring of former employees, in order to be in line with the regulations of TCDERS, our retirement program, any employee who resigns must be separated from employment for, per TCDERS regulations, at least one calendar month, which in some cases, if they resign on the second day of, say, July, we could not rehire those people until September. So that's over 60 days. So to make it easier across the board, no confusion, we have put in a 90-day limit on a return to work for an employee, even if that is a temporary or part-time capacity.
Okay, y'all want to take these one at a time or all together?
Could be able to put them together, there are no changes.
All right, why don't you go ahead to the second one then, Mary?
The second one is guidelines on terminations, and the only thing we changed there is the effective date of termination, which is on page two. The effective date of any employee's termination will be the last day that the employee actually works, unless that employee was placed on administrative leave. Again, that's a liability issue for us, we don't do terminal leave, so this just clears that up and puts it in black and white. Any questions on that one?
No.
Okay. I'm going to take the next two that I have. The Treasurer has the automated time and attendance and compensatory policy. I'll skip down to the employee status definitions, and what we did there was just clear up some language. On the, the biggest change is the part-time employee definition. Per the Affordable Care Act, a full-time employee would be anyone who works more than 30 hours on average a week. Therefore, our part-time employee definition has changed to define a part-time employee as an employee who works up to a maximum of 24 hours per week. That's three days a week, and that means that our part-time employees would then not qualify for benefits under the Affordable Care Act.
Okay.
Questions on that?
With the exception of retirement.
Pardon me?
With the exception of retirement.
Oh, with the exception of retirement, yes.
So if they have a question on the 24 hours, is the 24 set in stone, is that, is that the number for the government benefits?
No.
29, who are they going to appeal to if they have an issue that someone needs 27, 26? Who are they going to appeal to? HR, the court, the Treasurer?
If you, if you look at the wording on this, it says up to a maximum of 24 hours. That number was, it wasn't a random number, but it puts us well below the threshold in the event that somebody comes in and works 32 hours, 33 hours. The Affordable Care Act looks at an average hours for employees, so 24 is the number that we came up with, so that there's absolutely no question that they're going to go over that threshold.
Okay.
And the last one is the update on the travel policy, and the only thing that we added to this policy is that, it's on the first page, that reserved deputies may be reimbursed for travel and training if there is money in the departmental budget for those expenditures. That language wasn't in the previous policy, and there was a question that came up, and that's all we changed on that.
Okay, Kathy, are you going to take the other two?
I'm ready.
All right.
Judge and Commissioners, mine are a little more cumbersome, and I didn't have the time to go back and redline everything that I have changed, but I'll just briefly go over. Automated time and attendance, basically what I did was cleaning up the wording on it. We better define the work week. Hood County's work week is Monday through Friday, I'm sorry, Monday through Sunday. That's always been in most of our policies, but I ensure that it is in this policy. Under procedures, I just reiterated, reiterated again that clocking in and out is recommended, and for those exempt employees, I know that from time to time, we've discussed liability issues when they leave the building, so I reiterated the fact that even though they're not required to clock in and out, they, for liability purposes, are. I also reiterated that if there is an absent reflected on the day on the timesheet, it is no longer going to be the Treasurer's Office's responsibility to track these people down. I know I've said this before, and we've, we've been very gracious, but with 350 employees, it's become way too cumbersome to try to keep tracking people down. If it's absent, the employee will receive an adjusted gross pay. That's, we have to take a stand at some point. It also talks about adjustments on payroll. In the event they get short paid, it won't get reimbursed until the following pay period. If it's our fault, we most definitely will make it right that pay period. On the second page, under patrol deputies, I made it a point, because there has been some confusion about the call-in system, I made it a point to put the wording in, the call-in system does not apply to deputies, investigators, deputy constables, fire marshal, or other law enforcement personnel who go into the office daily. There is not a reason for them to use the call-in system if they are physically in that break room and have access to the clock. Now, the sheriff and I have discussed this, and there are times, they've got meetings going on right away when they hit the building, there are exceptions to that, of course. Two paragraphs after that, I better defined the shift and the grace period. The grace period is a five-minute window, but what I added was the wording "shift" on there. That kind of takes the five-minute window out of those folks who seem to think it's okay to clock in 20 minutes early and leave 30 minutes late. I also defined the supervisor's responsibility, that they are to monitor their employees' scheduled shift, and they're not, their employees are not allowed to work before and after that shift without their approval. I also added that we could, we being the Treasurer's Office's payroll, could add the absence, in the absence of schedules, that we can add those schedules based on what an employee has worked consistently. Only other thing, on the very last page, I recommended, or actually, I added the wording, it's the recommendation of the Commissioners Court, that employees clock in and out for lunch. That's not required, but again, you're coming into a big liability if your employee leaves the building and they're on the clock. And we did have, back in 2006, we had an employee got hurt in an automobile accident, and she was on the clock. It did result in, not a lawsuit, but some big problems. So my recommendation is that all departments have their employees clocking in and out for lunch. Of course, we can't force that, but it would certainly take some of the gray area out of there. Law enforcement 28-day cycle, they are paid on a bi-weekly basis. I made sure and included that in here because there's some confusion about their adjustment period. Other than that, that is the only changes that I made to the timekeeping system policy.
And you covered compensatory time?
That's the next one.
Oh, okay.
You make a statement, we can't, explain why we couldn't, or if we wanted to, just explain, is there why we couldn't make somebody do that, clock in or out at lunch? You said we couldn't.
If the Commissioners Court sets the policy, you can require it.
I thought you said we couldn't make them.
Well-
The way it's right now.
The way it is right now, no. If you elect to change that policy at some point, yes, you could.
In not doing it, aren't we just voluntarily assuming the liability?
Yes, we are, and it is a, in talking to the Personnel Director, it's a huge liability.
It's gotta be.
Every time an employee leaves this building and doesn't clock out, this building or any of the others, they are on your clock, which means if they get in an accident or something happens-
That some attorney will find a way to make us responsible.
Exactly. Now, I will tell you that probably 60% of the officials and supervisors have their employees clock in and out for lunch. Where it's not really applicable or feasible would be someone like road operations or the patrol deputies. Road operations are out in the field, there's, they don't have access to the clock. Anybody that's in a building has access to that clock. It doesn't take them five minutes to walk to the clock and clock out for lunch. That's just my personal opinion. But it is something to consider at some point.
Okay.
Any questions on that one? Overtime compensatory time policy, over the years, we've had a couple of them. However, with ever-changing laws, we really haven't had something that is concrete and covers everything. What I did was I put together an overtime compensatory time policy that kind of leaves no questions unanswered. I sent all of you a copy of the policy, just to highlight a couple of things. Again, I defined the work weight. I started the policy out with quoting the section that anybody, an employee supervisor, anybody can go to the FLSA or the DOL, they can look this up themselves, so this was, this policy was written on everything, it was written based on the FLSA, the DOL, and then I pulled some law excerpts to be sure that we were covered. One thing that is very important, under overtime, overtime is calculated as any hours worked over 40 actual, in a work week, which county's work week is defined in the above sentence. In the past, there's been a lot of confusion with employees trying to use time to make time. That is not acceptable. What has to happen is they actually have to work 40 hours before it's considered overtime. They can't use vacation, sick, comp, holiday to make up that 40. That's black and white in this policy, it wasn't before.
Holiday falls under there as well.
I'm sorry?
Holidays falls under there as well. I know that vacation is sick, but holiday is included? What if you have to work on a holiday? I mean, you can't use a holiday, I know holiday, there was a reason, there was something to do with holiday on that.
If you, to give you an example on a holiday, just throwing one out there, if you worked 33 hours and you, there was a week that included a holiday, holiday is straight time, so that 33 plus eight would be 41, so you're going to get an hour of holiday earned.
So holiday isn't acceptable, you can't, you're not, you're not making time to make it, but that's example-
It's not comp time, it's holiday time. Going down to work in excess of normal schedules, again, I touched on, overtime has got to be approved by the supervisor. They cannot work overtime without prior approval from their immediate supervisor. Compensatory time use, this is the big one. This is on the second page. I was approached by several members of the court, other departments, Personnel Director, and I might add that the Personnel Director, Mary and I, all discussed these policies before we moved forward. There's been a lot of compensatory time paid off over the years, and I've been asked over the years, why can we not force the use of compensatory time? You can, you're a government entity. You can force the use of compensatory time first. So what I did was I put compensatory time shall be used first prior to any other leave time unless the employee has exceeded the maximum number hours of vacation. In other words, we don't want to cheat that employee out of their accrued vacation. But this is a way for the court to get that compensatory time under control, and it's also advantageous for the department heads because they can take this to their employee and say, you're going to use your comp time first. And as I understand it, we're not going to be paying comp time off again after this year. We're through paying comp time off unless an employee terminates. That was one of the big reasons I was asked to put this in.
That was a reason for the 90-day rehire as well, correct?
Yes.
Because that way, they can't just quit, get their payoff, and go back to work?
Correct, and we all talked about that.
Okay.
The only exceptions to comp time, of course, your dispatchers, they fall under a different set of rules, you must pay them cash overtime. That is not our rule, that's federal rules. And the only other thing I added was in the event, using the tornado as an example, there are going to be times that we're going to have to waiver from this policy, but there's other policies that overlap this.
Let's hope we don't have any more tornadoes.
Terminated employees, we did cover this, I spoke with the auditor and the Personnel Director, and Mary Gertis in Personnel. What this does, any employee that leaves, of course, we have to pay that. Compensatory time, by the way, never goes away, that's something you can't take away other than force the use of it. We have to pay that out if someone vacates a position. One of the concerns over the years is that the budget has not been available to go right out and hire another person. I talked with the auditor, and that's one of the things that we covered in here, is they must remain vacant until the time payments to former employees have been absorbed in the department's budget, but they can come before the court to grant a waiver on that. So that's not, it prevents them from depleting their budget, but they can come before you and ask for waiver on that. Promotions and transfers, same thing. If a transfer comp time payout results in a budget shortage, the transferring department shall not be allowed to fill the open position until such time the budget has been restored, unless prior approval is given by the Commissioners Court. Kind of puts it back on y'all to, to get that approval. The only other thing I did is I kind of spelled out holidays. You all set the holidays every year, they're not a given, they're a budgeted item, they're not actually a benefit, so I kind of made sure that all of the employee supervisors knew that that- So I kind of made sure that all of the employee supervisors knew that that was a court decision and not necessarily a county policy. Any questions on that one?
I would like to see on this lunchtime clockout, do we need to pull this and add that in there, if the court's agreeable to it, or make an amendment to it later?
Let's do, I think amendment later, let's go ahead and, that's my opinion, what do y'all?
I don't like the liability of that.
I agree, I don't...
Why don't y'all work on that, punch it in and out, and bring it back to the court?
Yes, Commissioner, if we can, the reason that I wanted to get this through today is because all of these go into effect on the 22nd.
Make an amendment to it.
We can revisit that one.
Okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve A through F of the...
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Been all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank y'all very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the Commissioners Court's schedule, and I believe that there is a problem in December with the date of the 24th meeting. So what's your pleasure on that, having it on the 24th, moving it to the 23rd, moving it to the week before, or whatever?
24th is a county holiday. So I'd just like to move it back a week. We have a problem with this room on that Monday, when I checked.
I agree. So you want to move it to the 17th?
Move it back, I'm sorry.
The other way?
The other way.
Forward.
No, that forward would be the 17th.
17, back would be the 31st.
That's before. Forward is before.
Anyway, how about moving to the 31st?
Just forward, I would say, that's the week ahead, but backwards would be...
Wouldn't you say so, Lisa?
Yeah, I agree. I'll go along with that, I'll second it.
Okay. Well, do y'all want to do that then, is, let me approve this schedule, with the exception of December the 24th, move to December the 31st?
Then I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, have motion made.
Second.
Second by Commissioner.
Roan, is that, did you do that? All right, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider a presentation from Texas Agrolife, Jody Carlson, on a possible grant for septic tank replacement.
Judge Commissioners, thanks for this opportunity to come and present this for you. I think, as most of you know, in the mid-2000s, a watershed protection plan was developed for Lake Granberry with input from the county, City of Granberry, private citizens, local businesses, to address some E. coli issues in the lake. Out of that plan, there were some management measures that were developed, and that's kind of what this relates to. That plan identified septic systems as a primary source of E. coli contamination in certain parts of the lake. So I'm coming today to present a funding opportunity to help address some of those issues, those septic tank issues. So this is a grant, it's a federal Clean Water Act, Section 319, non-point source management grant. It's a federal grant issued by the EPA. They give money out to each of the states. In the state of Texas, TCEQ gets half of the money, Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board gets the other half of the money. And they're the ones that end up taking in the applications and reviewing them. This grant is a 60/40 grant, meaning it's a 60% grant, and you have to come up with a 40% match. That 40% match can be in-kind services, so whatever things that you're already doing, indirect fringe costs from employees that are involved can go to that. Typically, three-year grants, in this case, that would begin in September 2014 and go through August 2017. You can go to the next slide there. What we're proposing is a grant that would have several different tasks. The main thing would be onsite sewage facility or septic tank replacement or remediation. Trying to get to where we can get enough money to replace about 10 a year, so a total of 30 over the three years. Also, we would look at just normal Hood County Environmental Health OSSF program administration, and particularly permit digitization. James McCostlin and his group at Environmental Health have been able to digitize some of their permits, but the majority of them are still in paper format. And so we're looking at being able to fund, get some money to continue that digitization so they can have those in electronic format for easier...
Is this going to help the coliform count in the water, lake water?
That's the ultimate goal, is remove some of these septic systems that are near the lake, near these canals where we have these high numbers, replace them with systems that are working.
Now, is this 40%? Is that the county's responsibility, or the homeowners?
The 40%, and if you want to, go ahead and skip to that slide right there. What we're trying to do is meet our 40% match through all in-kind services. So with this grant, Texas Agrolife is going to be the entity that applies for the grant and administers the grant. They would partner with Hood County, and they're also seeking to partner with the Brazos River Authority, because they already do E. coli monitoring, and we would like to continue that. The 40% match, part of that would come through Environmental Health's already existing OSSF, their program administration, their normal inspections, what they normally do, anything related to septic systems. Texas Agrolife would have some in-kind services through the grant administration, and then the BRA through their E. coli monitoring. And so we think we can get enough of in-kind services so that there's no out of, no non-reimbursable funds that have to be expended by any of the partners. That was kind of, we know that budgets are tight, and that's what we're working with, and we've kind of had initial discussions with the TCEQ and kind of told them, you know, this is where we're at. They have this pot of money set aside, they can only spend a portion of their money on EPA-approved watershed protection plans, there's only three in the state, Lake Granberry is one of them, and the other two are not applying for these type of grants because they had applied for them the previous year. So they have this pot of money that they would, they sure would like to give out. And so we kind of laid out, these are our stipulations. We don't have a lot of money that we can put towards that 40% match, so we're going to have to do everything, everything through in-kind services.
And Jody, while we're there, since you and James came and talked to me, and I asked the same question that Chris Rattatt asked, when you're looking at September of 2014, for three years, that's a year away, if you do 10 a year, that's less than one a month. I mean, so I ask you if everything would be done in-house, or how, I mean, I don't want to add, you know, my first question with a grant is, how much is it going to add to the already offices in the county, purchasing, auditor, treasurer's office, and so forth? But that's why you're bringing that up. James will handle most of that, that he already does for onsite septic fields, and what you're asking for is to digitize files, the inspector going out and inspecting the location, so those are in-kind, along with equipment and salaries are part of the in-kind as well, is that correct?
Correct. And we've had some discussions, me and James were talking the other day, if, that 10 per year is kind of, depending on how much we can get through our in-kind services, is going to kind of depend on how many systems we can replace, how many pages we can digitize.
Will you explain that, digitize those, would you explain that real quick?
Yeah, so right now, all of Environmental Health's sewer permits are hard copies, or the majority of them are. And so it would be hiring an outside company to come in and scan all those, digitize them so that James can get those, just have to email those to people when they request it, instead of having to come in and pull them out manually, they would just all be in a database. So it would cut down on their time in the future, and once that's done, then you have those forever, and it's a lot easier to maintain.
Now, will this be for, we'd be replacing systems that have been condemned?
Not necessarily condemned. Not necessarily condemned, we're looking at, in certain areas, in the watershed protection plan, we have some priority areas where we know we have high E. coli numbers and a lot of older septic systems. So that would be like Oak Trail Shores, Sky Harbor, Indian Harbor, Rolling Hill Shores, those types of places, Arrowhead Shores, Protocol, Holiday Estates.
You might explain there, the grant's not done by, I mean, how can you apply for the grant, you're going to get it out?
Really, anybody in those priority areas would be eligible. We are going to focus on ones that are waterfront or near waterfront, because those are the ones that we feel have the highest potential to increase E. coli in the lake. But there's no income requirement, we're not, I think in the past, the county has had a grant where you had to make under a certain amount of money to be eligible. We're really looking at, we don't care how much money you make, but if you've got a system that could potentially be contributing E. coli, we want to get that...
You've already got some targeted in, so...
Yes, yeah. And we're working with James McCostlin and Environmental Health Department in identifying those ones, obviously ones where, you know, they've had to go out and have action before, those would get moved to, you know, the top of the list.
These be aerobic systems you're putting back in, replace the old systems?
More than likely. Just because you, in most of those places, you can't put in a conventional system, just in the soil type and the size. We're still trying to work out a lot of the grant details. Today, what Texas Agrolife is asking is just, you know, approval to pursue this funding, working with Environmental Health to kind of craft this grant application to submit to the TCEQ. So we're months away from signing any type of contracts, really even having a good, a work plan on exactly how this is done, but just to kind of get this process started so that James can kind of work with us on putting some actual dollar figures down on how much their department works on OSSF's, you know...
The reason I asked the question about aerobics, who, if these persons apply for this grant and get their aerobics, which probably will be, whose responsibility will it be to see the aerobic system as being maintained?
Well, they would have to follow the same rules that the state, and then the county has a little bit stricter, where they have to have a maintenance contract, and those have to get...
Are they following those rules now?
Yet they should be, right, James?
For those septic systems that use the aerobic treatment, per the county order, they are required to have to make this contract and have those inspections, so yes. Now, for those systems out there that Jody is referring to, most likely, likely that it would be replaced are those old systems, old pipe and gravel systems, that really were undersized or could be failing and that we don't know about, that the property owners are just dealing with. But yes, to answer your question, if for some reason that soil criteria required it to change over to one of the aerobic systems, there would be a maintenance inspection program involved.
And like, I want to make a clarification, I said we're trying to meet all of our, that 40% match through in-kind services. And the goal is, and really the big caveat on whether we proceed with this, is that no non-reimbursable funds have to be expended by any of the partners. And I want to just emphasize that non-reimbursable, there would have to be some money paid out to the contractors for the digitization, the county would have to submit, you know, to solicit some bids on that digitization, and then Texas Agrolife would reimburse the county within 30 days. And then we're also trying to exactly figure out how we're going to do the installation. We think the best way it would be would, to solicit bids for one installer to do all of those. And again, that would be probably something that the county would do.
Who manages the grant?
Texas Agrolife would be the...
You work for Texas Agrolife?
Yes.
So you administer the grant?
Me and my boss.
He's part of the in-kind?
Yeah.
But yes, but I'm making sure it's not, doesn't fall in somebody else's office.
Right, right.
It would be, and this grant is also going to fund a watershed coordinator for another three years. My position, grant ends about this time next year, this would put that position available for another three years, and then they would help advertise that program, going out and talking with, because that's what it's going to really take, I think, to get people to want to do this, because it's kind of, it's too good to be true if you're saying you're just going to replace my septic system, and I don't, so you're going to have to go out door-to-door. And so that's what the watershed coordinator would do. That wouldn't necessarily have to fall to Environmental Health to go out and advertise this program.
How many defective or deficient systems are there on the lake right now?
I don't think we have a good idea of that. I mean, right now, I mean, James, I think the other day said that he doesn't know of any, you know, particularly that are technically, legally malfunctioning. But we do know that around Lake Granberry, within, I think that a two-mile radius of Lake Granberry, 70% of the soils are rated severe, which means that without installing a, an aerobic treatment unit or some type of specific design elements, that soil will not be suitable for septic systems. And so we know we have a lot of septic systems that are in soils that now you couldn't put them in, but they were put in before those rules went in place.
But now, if we do 30 in the next three years, is that still going to stay severe? I mean, what impact will it have?
The thing is, with newer systems that don't rely on the soil to do the treatment, so, and that's why we want to focus on waterfront, those that are right near the canals, and the canals are really the main problems.
If you just did one, that'd be an improvement.
Yeah, but I think what I hear, how long do you have to keep your records, James, for the onsite septic field records that we're going to digitize? How long, do we keep those forever, or how long do you keep those?
We have kept those forever simply because, for the fact that properties change ownership. I wonder if the owner of the property that had that installed probably took those records with them. That's a courtesy to the real estate agents.
So that's one of the biggest assets here, is they'd be easier to find when they're online or where you can email them, because right now, you have to dig through, if you sell a piece of property 15 or 20 years old, you have to go back and look through files to find that, is that correct?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
All right, thank you, Jody Kason, for coming and making that presentation.
You just want us to recommend that we allow you to continue to explore these options and come back with a contract if money is provided?
Correct, that's correct.
Here's more, another slide there he showed you, but...
Yeah, those are just the, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at, and I mean, again, like I said, it all depends on that in-kind services, how much money we can come up with is going to determine how much, how many septic systems we can replace and how many pages we can digitize. But the goal is, is to try to do something to help improve the OSSF program for Hood County and then the residents by replacing some of these aging septic systems, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve them going ahead with this, Agrolife.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion executed by Commissioner Roan, any further discussion?
When will you know, Jody, or when will you come back with, I mean...
I'm not quite sure the timeframe, I mean, the wheels turn slowly because it goes, it's got to go through the TCEQ, and then the EPA, and then there's talk back. And we wouldn't come with, you know, an inter-local agreement... And we wouldn't come with, you know, an inter-local agreement between AgriLife and Hood County till sometime, I would say in the spring or early summer. I mean, we're talking several months.
Now, can you guarantee that Hood County won't be on the hook for any money?
Yes. I mean, if it ends up where Hood County is going to have to pay money, then we're not going to do it. AgriLife's not going to put in, kick in any cash, Hood County's not. And so we know that, the TCEQ knows that, so I think they're willing to work with us on some stuff. It all depends on what the EPA is going to want.
Can we charge money to the homeowners?
Yes. And me and James talked about that, where maybe we say, well, we'll pay $8,000, up to $8,000, and it's up to the homeowner to pay more, you know, pay the additional whatever, you know, $1,000, $2,000, just to get buy-in from the homeowner, to stretch out that money. And then that would also count towards in-kind services as well, so that's an option as well.
If you get $20,000, that would be, that would be two more systems.
Yeah, yeah.
For a year.
Okay. Any further, any more discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much, Jody. Next item is Hood County Historic Commission, historical, considering take appropriate action regarding approval of a donation of $500 to the Hood County Genealogical, is that right?
I think it's mislabeled, Judge.
And historic.
I mean, number five says Hood County Historical Commission, but A, B, and C cover three areas, and two of them are not involved with historical.
Okay, we'll just take A then.
Take A?
Yeah.
Okay. To begin with, we're not asking you for any more money.
Thank you.
We are only coming to you because this ends up happening at the end of the fiscal year. We started wanting to, voting to give $500 to the depot to help them get a new air conditioner as we are dictated to help the county historical type situations. We have the money. It will not ask you to do any more funds. It comes out of our $4,000 budget. We will end the year with excess funds that we don't spend. We try not to.
Waste that money.
Be tighter than Dick's Hat Man.
That's not this Dick, eh?
We'd appreciate it if you let us spend $500 to give to the Hood County Genealogical and Historical Society for air conditioning, to help get an air conditioning system in the depot.
Do they use a window unit, or is that central air they put in down there?
Central.
It is?
I think.
Are you making that motion, Commissioner?
That'd be fine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Any other questions for Christie? Okay.
Couple more months, you're not going to need air conditioning.
Yeah, just.
The heating part.
Yeah.
You think we won't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Christie. Considering take appropriate action regarding the approval of a donation of $300 to the Friends of the Library Visiting Author Fund to help sponsor Dr. Carla Kaplan, a Davis distinguished professor. Are you doing this one too?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Last month, Bob Kent, an historian of Hood County, came to us and said that the Friends of the Library were bringing in an author of the book, Miss Ann in Harlem, The White Men of the Black Renaissance. We wanted to know why this had dealt with us. Josephine Cogdal, the Cogdals in Granbury, married a black gentleman, and this was in Harlem, and she, there's 100 pages in this book about her. Friends of the Library are going to different groups to get money to bring this woman to speak about her book and about the historical aspects. And since it's the last of the year, we're asking that you allow us to give the Friends of the Library $300, which is not asking you for any extra money at all.
You sound like they elected them before they went and doing budget amendments, okay?
All right, do I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Dever made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion?
Yeah, question. This is budgeted money that they already have approved of them. Why does, why does she have to come to us with this detail?
It's just information more than anything.
Yeah, I say, she should advise us of it, not ask for approval to do it.
Well, the last 12th of the year, the last of the year, you can't spend more than a 12th of your total budget.
It says spend, it doesn't say anything about donating.
Anyway, moving right along, we have a long agenda.
I say that knowing that none of the appointed officials here are going to donate budget money to a other department. Okay, but.
But I already have a motion.
Ask the sheriff how much he wants to donate back to us.
I second the motion, that's.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Considering take appropriate action regarding the approval of a location for the, this has to.
I understand.
For the Nellie Robertson Historical Marker on the south side of the courthouse lawn.
Certainly wouldn't want Nellie on the wrong side of the courthouse. Takes approval.
Okay. We are not asking you for any money on this one. Historical marker is not approved yet. The application is not even sent in. Before I can send the application for the subject marker for the first county, woman county attorney in the state who happened to come from here, and then we have the second one.
Oh, you're going to get a marker.
It's going to be a little different, too.
The application, we've dealt with the Texas Historical Commission, and we know how much fun they are. They insist that the person responsible and authorized representative of the people who are responsible for the courthouse, the courthouse lawn, sign that it's okey-dokey to put a marker there if they do happen to approve it. And it has to go in with the application to begin with. This may not happen, but we think it will happen, and we have to have probably the judge to sign that you guys have approved, that if we do get a marker and the money for the marker will come out of next year's fiscal budget for the Historical Commission. So it doesn't cost you anything this year, donated or not. All I'm asking is that you okay him to sign the application that if we do get a historical marker, it can be put on the south side of the courthouse.
I believe when you were in office, you said you'd like to put it by the granites, the granite tombstones or the granite.
Markers.
Markers that are already there, is that correct?
Yeah.
So then I, and James is going to be at a stewardship meeting in October for the courthouse, so maybe he can, you know, go down and give him blessing and let us do it as well. But I'll make a motion, we allow the judge or.
Thank you.
Our representative of the court, mainly Commissioner Dever, to work with the Texas Historical Commission, if this happens, to make sure we have a spot to put this marker.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion?
Hope not.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you, Christie.
Now, you know that now, on our next meeting, that our library director's going to have to put another item on the agenda, accepting this donation for Friends of the Library. So we create ourselves more paperwork than we can possibly manage.
I think that would be the Friends of the Library, though.
It's still got to go on the agenda, to be accepted as a donation, you know, it's, I don't understand that.
Job security, Dick.
For who?
All right, now, item number six, considering take appropriate action on a proposed inter-local agreement with the city of Fort Worth, to continue participation in Fort Worth Environmental Collection Center Household Hazardous Waste Program. James?
Judge Commissioners, this is just one of those annual things that comes up, and I'm asking for your approval again, so that the county can participate and allow the citizens to take their hazardous waste up to Fort Worth for disposal.
And I believe we made a spot for that in the budget at the last budget hearings, is that not correct?
Yes, Commissioner, we were asked to add $3,000 to fund 103 for that.
You're doing that by vouchers, is that correct, James?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
See, Judge, my point was, we're so mundane with the issues we create, we even ran a newspaper off. Which is a good thing, yes.
Considering take appropriate action to approve inter-local agreement with Rockwall County to authorize county judges sign the agreement.
Yes, this is with the federal voting assistance program. It's a grant, and it's 50 other counties, and Rockwall's like our representative. And it's for people military ballot, get military ballots and all that good stuff. It also does have a audio, though, that we're going to have on our website, so anybody in the county can listen to it, and it marks, that's what they're telling me, I haven't got to see it yet, but you can mark your ballot, print it out, and bring it in like a cheat sheet with you, and then fill out your ballot when you come to vote. So it's kind of cool, but it's for the hearing impaired.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rohn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Considering take appropriate action to approve the fees for constables, sheriff, to go into effect January 1, 2014. This is Constable Precinct 4.
He's not here, but.
Both of you, maybe. Maybe it'd take both of you to make up for Chad, I don't know.
Let me quote that.
An 8.131, a local government code. Commissioners Court sets a fees once a year. We haven't raised them in six years, over six years. You guys should have a copy of what we're going to raise them to. I think most citations go up $15, or it's go up $50. It's up to you guys to vote on it. It's got to go to the state comptroller by the 15th of October. They take effect January 1.
Also, you'll notice, and I think you have a copy of this according to what Chad said, there is going to be some additional fee list, fees added to the list in conjunction with the Sheriff's Animal Control for collecting fees that have not previously been added to the fees list. I believe the sheriff, if I'm not, if I'm right, visited with Chad on this, and y'all sit down and have these numbers, y'all should have a copy of those, so.
Yeah.
Those were not previously included in the fees list, so that becomes a legal fee that we can charge these people.
Are these, you've compared these with other counties?
Yes, we took the counties we used for the comp committee, and actually, we're in the bottom 10% of all the counties in Texas. This moves us up to about the middle.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I have a question to sheriff on the animal control. Do you see any problem with these added fees that I saw, or you think it just goes in line with what you've already are trying to do at animal control?
No, we've discussed this over a period of time. We haven't just jumped right off into this, so, no, I think it'll be fine. Discuss it.
That's fine. I make a motion that we allow them to put in record their fees so they can go into effect at appropriate time.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, and second by Commissioner Rohn, to approve the new fee schedule of the constable and sheriff to go into effect January 1, 2014. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Consider take appropriate action regarding District Clerk's request to, this is Constable Precinct, I mean, Commissioner Precinct 3.
Judge, I got, I'd like to ask Commissioner Precinct 3, why is this thing back on the agenda?
The district clerk came and talked to me, and she told me that she had spoken with the, with the purchasing agent about purchasing items from, the microwave and refrigerator from Walmart. And the purchasing agent informed her that she didn't need an RFE, she could just go ahead and get the credit card from the district attorney's office and go ahead and purchase that. I would like to see all items that are being used by county employees to be purchased by the county, but after, you know, that's a personal statement. We do have a policy that states that that is not the correct thing. If someone buys something, they can't put it in public areas.
Thing of it is, they got to break room jail, and then you go open a can of worms, letting everybody buy stuff through the county in their personal offices, and I have a problem with that.
If I may say something?
Go ahead.
Number one, I never had a conversation with the district clerk that she didn't have to put in a request for an RFE. That is totally false. I did not tell her she did not have to have one.
Okay.
I will give these to you. You may already have them, but there's been some additional information. If she says she does not know about the procedures, there's a signed copy there. It's given to every department every year to acknowledge that they understand all the policies and procedures and the violations that can incur. According to local government code, the purchasing agent has the responsibility of having assistance when it's a decentralized purchasing. Anybody that purchases becomes an assistant to the purchasing agent and is under their It says that we will purchase all the materials. It says I'm responsible for coming up with the policies and procedures. The policies and procedures in place right now about credit cards have been in place since before I came to the county. I redid them in 2010 and kept those policies. It was approved by court in 2010. It says, under Chapter 6 of the Hood County Purchasing Policies and Procedures on Credit Cards, Chapter 6, letter I, one of the sentences is, "An approved RFE is required for all credit card purchases prior to order placement." I did not get an RFE until after it was already purchased, and they called and said, "Okay, well, we bought this stuff, we've got it, you know, how do we get this paid?" I said, "Well, what, send me your RFE, I want to look at it." They sent it to me, and I said, "I can't approve that."
How often does this happen?
Huh?
How often does RF, how often does somebody sign, buy something without getting an RFE?
It happens more than I would like to say.
Why?
Because they don't think it's important or really believe that. That, or they don't think about purchasing.
So we just went through a 15-minute conversation about timekeeping a while ago, and the reason we're having to readjust our timekeeping is because people, and elected and appointed officials, allow people to clock in early, and the comp time gets up, and then they'll get, like, so once again, it's, they're not signing their RFEs or they're not getting their RFEs, but, so.
I've been beating my head against the wall for five and a half years trying to get everybody to put in an RFE. I think most of you can ask anyone if I've ever said, "No, I don't want you to put in RFE," because my philosophy is, if there's a, if you have any question, put it in. What's it going to hurt? But they, they want to go out and do what they want to do, and they forget about the procedures.
Some.
Some do, not all, not all by any means.
I asked you about this a month ago, we should just take off the credit cards, you explained why that was a bad idea. I mean, there's a couple of departments that do work other than a 40-hour week that do have after-hours cases, because I, I mean, you did take the wrath of me pretty heavy about the credit card, and I, you explained that and why, but I'd like, we're passing credit cards around is ridiculous.
I put out an email after that and told, since it created a problem, and told them that that was no longer allowed, and that they needed to just keep their own credit cards. If they needed one for Walmart or someplace like that, they can come to purchasing. It's inconvenient, but they can come out there, get it, use it, and bring it back.
Okay.
This is the reason we turned ours in back to y'all.
Yes, I did have two departments that turned them in, which is fine. I have no problem.
It's a simple matter of certain individuals follow the rules and others don't.
That's correct.
They make their own rules, or they just disregard what's in force.
Well, it's very frustrating to me. I really spend a lot of the time trying to figure out what people are doing, because... to figure out what people are doing. Because I'll get a call, I got one yesterday, got another one this morning, about things that are, we have invoices for that I know nothing about. And it's not just a little bit of money, it's a lot of money.
And they're spending somebody else's money.
You know, and maybe they're, maybe it's perfectly, it's out of some fund they have or whatever that I have no say-so, and, and fine, but at least keep me informed.
I guess we could write a policy like some companies have. If you do that, they simply take the invoice that can't be validated, wasn't approved, and take it out of your paycheck.
I know they've done that in Fort Worth, or in Tarrant County, not Fort.
Yes, they have. They've done it in Dallas.
County has.
Yes, so has, so has Dallas County.
Tarrant County definitely has. You can ask Jack Beecham. He is a resident of Granbury, and he has often noted that at our Texas meeting. He's the purchasing agent for Tarrant County.
Unless, unless we have a county full of slow learners, that would only happen once, and you'd start following the rules.
Yes.
Commissioner, this is your deal. What do you want to do with this?
You know, in light of the fact that we have a policy, I mean, I brought that up because, you know, I wanted everything known. We have a policy that hasn't been followed. One of the, one of the issues I have, you know, if, if it says that you can buy it, you need to buy it with personal funds, now they went and spent, used the company credit card, the county's credit card, which does not pay taxes. So, now we've essentially taken tax revenue out of, out of the picture by doing this.
Personally, yes.
But my issue, since we have a policy that says they, that all are required an RFE for credit card purchases, I'd recommend that we, we don't pay this. We have Tona pay us back and reimburse us for the money that was spent.
Well, I know that it's, the credit card bill has not been paid yet. I know in last court, she said she would be more than happy to pay it. I sent her an email, and she has, has not responded to me whatsoever. It's never been paid. So, we are still waiting.
What happened? She don't pay it?
Item M gives us some recourse.
I, I don't know. I don't know the legal aspects of that. My suggestion would be to take possession of the property as county property, pay the bill, and put it in a common area under somebody's inventory.
With a tag on it.
Yes.
That'd be my vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, on this?
Wait, 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 wait. So, I go out and get a car, but yet I don't want to pay for it. Y'all are just going to take it and let somebody else use it in the county? I mean.
Now, there needs to be a policy.
Well, then, we just need to take this, she asked to take it off the agenda two weeks ago.
She said she'd pay for it.
That's right. That's the way it needs to be handled.
Yeah, she said she would pay for it.
I mean, I don't want to be.
We've got something right here. What do we do with this? This item?
He put it on there. He can, he can just disallow it.
My concern is that, I am like Jane, Mr. Dever, is that if we allow this, it's just going to continue, and it's going to get worse.
Someday, it's going to be something.
Let one person do it. It's just going to, it's going to snowball.
I agree. Like she said, Tarrant County and other counties, they make whoever does it pay for it.
Correct.
Well, you need a policy like that, though. We don't have a policy like that.
Yes, we do have a.
But we have a policy that says that. Yeah, but we don't have a policy saying, take it out of their check.
Treasurer has a comment.
Judge, we do have an authorization form that the employee or elected official can sign that authorizes us to deduct it from their payroll check. And with court action, we can force that issue.
Nelda, do you know of anywhere else this has happened since you've been here that we've bought it for individual offices or small appliances?
Not to my knowledge. Now, I don't see every piece of paper that comes through the purchasing department. That's what I have an assistant for. But I know if, if it's me, I, I won't approve them, and I think you know that. I think we could.
Well, I'm asking because I know that's the, that's the caveat. That's, that's being said. And I don't recall either. That's why I'm asking.
We went through inventory. If it's, if it's bought with county funds, it should be tagged. I went through the inventory, or I had Laura go through it.
Not under 500. That's the problem.
No, we do keep it.
Your inventory is?
Yes.
She don't tag it?
It, it, in the past, it was tagged. In the last two years, it's not. But she usually will write it down, that they have that in their office.
The last one I can find from doing my backup is Sherry McAllister bought one for the library.
Right.
Because it had to do with summer reading program.
There was one bought for the jail last year, for the jail kitchen. There was a microwave box.
That's different.
Exactly. We did find one for the common meeting room in Annex 1, and that was in '06 or something like that.
I will say this one. It first came to light, I thought it was going in this building in that break room. But is that not what you found out?
It's not. It's, it's in our office.
Yeah, and I know that we've discussed this many, three, four years ago, probably four or five years ago. And that's when it's not fair to the taxpayers to have to pay for these kind of things in individual offices. And I was asked to not approve those. And I have been trying to be diligent about not doing that.
Gentlemen, we are belaboring an obvious question.
I'll make a motion. We, then we pull this off the docket. Tona reimbursed the hundred and.
Hundred and ninety-nine.
As she said she would do.
The hundred and ninety-three dollars.
I don't think it takes an action from this court. It's just a matter of following policy.
She bought it, her to pay for.
Yes.
Okay. Sound with me?
All right, so, nothing else? Just, just, all right, now, item number 10, considering take appropriate action concerning hiring an attorney, representing Hood County in contract negotiations with the Granbury Independent School District.
Judge, if you'd like to do number 11, I'm going to request we go to executive session on number 10.
I agree.
So, I'd like to do number 11, so some people can go back to work.
We'll table that one right now. Considering take appropriate action to approve adding a stuffer to payroll envelopes, reminding employees the ability to donate to the United Way of Hood County.
Judges, Commissioners, thank you for that, Commissioner Berry. I need to get back to signing checks and doing payroll.
I want a paycheck, Thursday.
What this is, of course, I've presented this to you all in the past. United Way is very dear, near and dear to my heart. I'm not on the board. I'm not a representative of United Way, but I do keep in touch with them. Annually, they come and they visit me, and they ask me if I would please consider putting something in the payroll check that just ask our employees. They did a lot this year also for the tornado victims, and they do a lot for Hood County. So, I'm just simply asking if I can place these two little.
What, what check, what payroll will that be?
This payroll.
Okay, motion to approve.
This Friday?
Yes.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Judge, I have a question for everybody leaves. It's been brought on ask. I want to ask Stan the question. The new budget that was approved this morning, how soon will it be posted online? How long will that take? Today, tomorrow, end of the week?
Well, I'm hoping by the end of the day. I'll, I'll turn it over to Jackie in IT.
People are starting to ask that question, and I don't know the answer, so that's why I was asking you.
I hope it will be by the end of the day.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going into executive session.
I'll do it myself.
Per the Local Government Code, with consultation to attorneys on a contract under 551072. Okay, we call back into.
Regular session.
Regular session. Item number 10. Is there any action to be taken on item number 10? Or, that, wait a minute.
Yes, 10.
10, okay.
No, we're, we're not going to, I'd like to table this at this point.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Tout to table that. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right.
We are adjourned.
We're adjourned.
We're done.
It is. 12:15. We're adjourned.